We're now live.
Thank you, Town Clerk. Do we have any members of the public present?
No, we do not.
We don't? Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Agenda item one is election of Chair. Do we have any nominations? councillor Harvey?
I'd like to propose councillor White.
Thank you. Do we have a second for councillor White?
I'll second him.
Thank you councillor Ralph. Do we have any other nominations? Okay.
I'll propose councillor Harvey.
Councillor Harvey. Councillor Harvey's shaking his head.
I don't want to be, no.
Councillor Harvey's... Should I have asked councillor White if he's willing to be Chair?
I wasn't appraised of my nomination, so I'm not sure if I am available or not, but I'm happy to be considered.
Thank you. So councillor O'Donoghue.
Yeah, I was going to propose councillor Harvey as well, but he had said no in an email, which is a shame, because I think he'd be a great Chair.
Thank you. So do we have any other... councillor Harvey?
As I say, I think councillor White will be a great Chair too.
Do we have any other nominations? No. So can we proceed to the vote then? Those in favour of councillor White as Chair of the Environment Committee, please show.
Sumsay's happy to do it.
One, two, three, four, five, six. That is, hang on. You can vote for yourself, Warren, if you want to. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Oh. Thank you. Any against? No. Any abstentions? One abstention. Okay, welcome Warren to as Chair of the Environment Committee and I hand over to you now.
Thank you very much. Right, obviously I hadn't prepared to Chair the meeting, so please bear with me as we go through the next item on the agenda, which is the election of a Vice Chair. Are there any nominations? Councillor O'Donoghue.
Yeah, John, please be Vice Chair of Environment. Please.
Are there any seconders to that?
Hang on, hang on. John has to accept, be prepared to do it first.
I'd really rather not, frankly. I was going to propose Anya as Vice Chair.
Can we just deal with the first proposal first? So you'd wish to decline that nomination, John? Okay. In that case, I'm re-open for nominations. So councillor Harvey, is that a formal nomination?
Yeah, I formally propose Anya.
Okay, any seconders for that?
Is Anya willing?
Yep, thank you. You're on mute.
I'm mute.
Sorry, I would be willing.
Thank you. Any seconders then for that proposal?
Yep.
Councillor Gaetley, I think I saw you first.
Yep.
Are there any other nominations? No, I think I'll put that to the vote then. Those in favour of councillor Schaefer as Vice Chair?
One, two. Caroline, you can't vote because you're not a committee member.
Can I? That's...
Sorry.
I think that's just an accidental vote there.
I know, you're going to confuse me. That's the only reason I said. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Excellent, congratulations. That was unanimous, I believe.
Thank you.
Excellent, well done. Right, moving on to item three of the agenda, apologies for absence. Are there any?
No, apart from councillor Rabena Ahmed, which we accepted two months of apologies at full council, we have no other apologies.
Thank you very much. Any declarations of interest for items on the agenda?
No.
Obviously, if anything arises, do please notify me. Minutes of the last meeting, which is all the way back on the 29th of March, of course, that was a meeting that several of us were not at. Councillor Sturridge.
And I propose we agree those minutes, Chairman.
Thank you. Have we got a second for that?
Yep.
Councillor Harvey?
Yes.
Okay, happy to agree.
Yep.
I'm not seeing any dissent. Thank you very much. Right, that moves us on to some business then. Item six, which is the Action Report. Who's able to take us through this?
Well, I can take you through it. We generally just take questions unless anybody's... If anybody's got any specific, as we go through, we'll answer any queries as they come up.
Are there any specific questions that anyone wants to raise tonight on the Action Report? Councillor Harvey, you first?
Yeah, I guess wondering where we've got to with the purchase of the land for the cemetery and allotments, because obviously we made a decision about this several weeks ago now. Where are we up to? When is it going to be ours, as it were?
The solicitor was instructed pretty swiftly after the decision was made. I haven't got a particularly recent update from the solicitor, but I am chasing on a regular basis.
Okay.
I see we've got a few actions for July, so hopefully we're all on schedule for those deadlines. Yeah, I see nods on the heads, that's good.
Yep.
Any other specific questions, councillor Harvey?
Yeah, the Cairns Park ramp. I mean, this is dragging on and on and on. It's frankly ridiculous that it was built like this in the first place. So the ramp, they put next to a raised curb and the steps they put next to a dropped curb. I mean, how could you get it more wrong, essentially? And do we have any idea when this is going to be resolved?
Well, you've got the most recent update there, I'm afraid, so I can't really add to that.
Well, can we chase them again, I guess?
Yeah, we'll chase them again, report back again.
Is that still... Is that a complete... That's not really a computer science. So is this a planning issue or is this an environment issue?
It's getting something done, so it's not about the planning for it, it's about getting it fixed.
Okay, Caroline, can we ask you as one of our new councillors to maybe take that one away and we could maybe get some pressure from our BCA councillors on that as well?
That's the ramp.
Yeah. I am aware of this one, so if you want to have a quick chat after the meeting, I'll be happy to catch up on that.
Okay.
Good to get some progress on that. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else desperate to go on the action list, so in that case, we'll note that and move on to budgets. Town Clerk, this is then going to hand over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So this is the budget you get for every meeting. There are two parts to the budget. There's the revenue budget, which is the first part, and the last page is earmark reserves, which we spend as we get to them. At this stage in the year, there are no particular issues to report. It's too early to identify any areas of underspend or... And there are no massive issues on overspend yet either, but happy to take any questions.
Okay, I've got hands from councillor Sturridge.
Just to refresh ourselves, where were we on devolved services through the chairman? Is that figure still static or have we received a new figure or is that... To recall for members who won't know what devolved services are, Warren will, and John. The... Is that figure in there is what we're getting still or has it changed? Is it being rich? Because I know it was part of discussions with them at some point about what they're going to do going forward. So is that a static figure or is that the real money?
Yeah, if I may, Chair. It's a static figure, so the amount we were paid has been extended into this year again, so it's been the same number since it begun, pretty much. So this is the money that Buckinghamshire Council pay us to carry up devolved services next to the highway, so mostly grass cutting, a bit of sign cleaning and other things. So the figure has been extended year on year. There's been talk about reviewing it. There is a proposal for us to be a pilot to take on additional devolved services. That discussion has been much delayed and Buckinghamshire Council are currently recruiting someone to project manage that work, so hopefully that will be picked up again later in the year. So for now, there's no change at all and as soon as there's discussions, we'll report back to committee.
Thank you, Town Clerk. As there's no one else asking to speak, so councillor Sturridge, I'll give you a second chance to follow up.
Yeah, and thank you. And just the other issue was on for 5-0, not the playing fields, not the gas, which is a normal question, the gas supply. But have we got a determinant date on the solar panels?
No, so we have money for Lacehill Panels and the community centre. We've got contractors' details and we're about ready to go out to tender for the Lacehill solar panels. So we're hoping that if not for the next committee, certainly for the one afterwards, we'll have the quotes for the committee to agree for that work.
I was surprised John never raised it because he raises at most meetings about solar panels and it would be nice if we could get our buildings covered with them, wouldn't it?
It's a shame we're missing the peak solar period, but never mind, hopefully we can crack on that soon.
There will be another summer though, Warren, hopefully.
We can all hope. Okay, in that case, we'll note the budgets. Just in terms of devolved services, I'd like to bring back to the next meeting the area around the Forwards, so we can maybe discuss that in a bit more detail. So if we can have that as an agenda item, Paul, that'd be useful.
Yeah.
Right, so... Right, item eight is a motion, councillor Harvey. We've got a motion from you tonight with regards to people, especially women, feeling safe in our parks and green spaces to discuss the current provision of street lighting and decide whether to explore putting in extra illumination. Did you want to talk to this before we open up to discussion?
I'll talk briefly. Essentially, the motion says it all. I'm not proposing any particular places without just a sense of reviewing where the dark spots might be and maybe some community consultation to find out what people think. It is a trade-off. Obviously, there's a cost involved. But more than that, there's also the issue about dark skies and so on. And do we need... I mean, like, you know, at the kind of eastern end of Borton Park, which is probably the darkest park that we have under our control. You know, should we put in lights there? Should we not? I mean, I think there are arguments on both sides and I would like, you know, I'd like to see a report just examining what the options are, what are the pros and the cons, and some amount of community consultation to kind of give us a guide on this. So I don't think it's about... It's not about making a decision whether we do or don't do this. It's about making a decision to say, let's do some thinking about this and then let's engage the community and then bring it back for a decision at a later date, perhaps obviously with the costs, but also with an examination of the impact upon all members of the community, particularly women, because we know from the research that women in particular are the ones who feel less secure in darker places. And we are obviously heading into the winter as well. So I think it'd be good to do this fairly rapidly so that we can report back and make a good decision at the next meeting. That's about all I want to say, really.
Thank you, councillor Harvey. And before we wish winter upon us, of course, we haven't even got to the summer equinox yet, so let's hold off on that quite yet. I've got councillor Sturridge and then councillor Schaefer. So councillor Sturridge first.
Yeah, I'm quite happy to support this, but I think we need to, while we're doing it, to actually not use the time to establish whether some of the lights we've got are the most solar efficient lights we've got, the most energy efficient lights we've got and gather that information at the same time, because rather than do it twice and try to... If we do decide to change, improve or make anything better, we might as well try and lower the carbon footprint for it all at the same time. So that would hit the targets there. And I think it's a good opportunity to review both things at once. I don't think... They're not con to victory, are they?
Thank you for raising that, councillor Sturridge. And actually, you preempted one of my points, was is this a good opportunity to review all our park lighting, to see what our provision is? If it's the latest efficient models and is it the right place? Are there any defects that we can be dealing with and scheduling? So I might ask Lee to comment towards the end of this agenda item, if that's okay. Councillor Schaefer, next.
I think that's in principle a good idea and I would support it. I have a question as to whether we currently have any indication that those areas to the eastern end of Borton Park are problematic. I know they are dark, but has this actually been raised by anybody? In which case, it's certainly something that we should consider more urgently than not. I would also second the idea of reviewing all our park lighting in particular in terms of whether it's the most energy efficient. And while we're at that, we should also see whether it meets the best available standards in terms of light pollution. Not that I'm an expert on it, but my belief is that modern lighting or the standard is that it should direct all the light downwards. And to what extent does it actually meet or our current lighting actually meet those requirements is what I would add to that review.
Thank you very much. Councillor O'Donoghue?
Thank you. I'm on the same kind of lines as Anya, actually, that if the report could take into consideration the houses light down by me and make sure there's no light pollution that comes across. Because I have the feeling that might be why some of the paths weren't lit originally. I have a feeling it might have to do with housing nearby. But definitely round by the mugger and places like that, it is incredibly dark. And I don't think there would be an issue with light pollution, but if the report could take into consideration, you know, along Linden Village, the houses there. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good reminder about why there may be some areas of gaps, as you say. Right, so there's a few issues there to sort of flesh out the motion, which, John, I'm assuming you're happy with those extra comments? Okay, so really just to...
Yeah, very happy.
Thank you. So just to go to our officers in terms of capacity to respond to this motion and would this be a good opportunity to schedule in a review of our park lighting in general as well? So I don't know, Paul or Lee, who's best to respond to that?
Yeah, we can do. The only lighting actually that we do own currently is Chandos Park. And all the heads of that street lighting were replaced about a year ago. And we chose them as directly, as you say, the lighting that does face directly down and they were low energy as well. So I mean, that one's quite straightforward. The other lighting that is in Borton Park is actually owned by Highways, which runs along the main, the busy footpath, the main pathal way through. And we're constantly reporting whenever there's issues with that. But as you say, the far end near the mugger is quite isolated. And it would be worth looking at the solar panels option, mainly because there isn't the electric infrastructure there already. So if you did want it wired into the mains, as it were, a large cost of that would be getting electric down to that end. But yeah, certainly worth investigating.
Thank you for that. And I do wonder, is it worth contacting our neighbourhood police to just sort of find out if there have been any actual incidents reported or if we are dealing with a perception? Because I think that might help frame what the discussion might be if we do go to the public for any feedback on this. Paul, I'm assuming as this is a new motion, there's nothing in the budget in this current year for doing any operations?
No, and as Lee said, we've got very few lights, so that our budget for lighting is very, very small. But we... I think we need to work out what we want to do and then work out how to pay for it, is usually the best way around.
Okay, I just thought I'd ask the question as the budget is a new one for me. Okay.
So are we going to formally vote to agree the motion?
I think that's what I...
It's one thing for you, Chairman. When we're... There was an aspiration for lots of things in Borton Park, be them additional toilets, be them additional lighting for events, be them whatever. It really, if we're spending money once, we need to make sure we spend it properly and look at those things. There were aspirations, no agreement, but if we're going to go out and try and budget for money, we must try and hit as many targets as we possibly can with agreement of the council. Would you not agree?
I wouldn't agree, actually, because I would have assumed that the committee last year would have agreed as priorities and got those in the budget for this year. So if the park strategy has moved on, that's something for us to discuss this year for next year's budget. Obviously, this is a motion that's reacting to some public events and some tragic incidents earlier in the year, I suspect, John, am I right? So I'm happy to take this as something a little bit outside the park strategy. And of course, I'll need, as a new member to the council, update myself. Those of you who've been around a little while longer will remember that I helped author the first park strategy quite a long time ago. So I'll need to see where it's moved on since then. So I think with the motion that is in our agenda, with the additions of the light pollution, light efficiency, obtaining some police reports to make sure that we have all the evidence in front of us. Are we happy to approve this motion? So those in favour?
That is unanimous.
Excellent. In that case, we can move forward. Thank you, John, for bringing that to the table. Right, the draft community flood plan, item nine. Who's taken us through this?
I'll cover this.
Thank you, Paul.
Chair. So yes, so as you know, for those of you who weren't here, we identified, we had a community flood plan in place back last year. We identified late last year that it needed a thorough review, particularly because we hadn't got any, a key part of the flood plan are the flood volunteers and we didn't have any flood volunteers signed up at that point. Things had drifted a little bit. So we had plans to update the community flood plan in spring this year. Obviously, events rather overtook us, so we've done a detailed review. One of the things we spent a lot of time on is actually what is the town council's responsibility? What is Buckinghamshire Council's responsibility? So one of the things the town council decided earlier this year was that the town council doesn't provide a 24/7 response service because to put that in place actually costs money in terms of paying people to cover. And it's a very rare occurrence when that's required, whereas Buckinghamshire Council do have a 27 response service in place for emergencies and they have all our details. So we've come up with them a plan which lists what everybody's responsibilities would be in the case of a flood. The things to add around this are the intention is to test our plan and Buckinghamshire Council plans out in September with some kind of exercise. So probably mostly desktop, but with people running around Buckingham trying to theoretically talk about what would happen to implement this. The plan would be updated at least once a year and we would check out all the contacts and different policies, more organisations to make sure everything's live. And we would also be putting a leaflet into residents' doors every year of all the vulnerable properties to make sure people are aware that there is a community flood plan and their homes are at risk. So this is a draft document, but this is obviously a key time to take comments and make edits to it as appropriate.
Thank you, Paul. Before I open to questions, just how do you see this interaction with the formal section 19 investigation that Buckinghamshire Council is currently undertaking? Do you see this in draft until that happens, until that's published and take on board any recommendations from that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we've got a little bit of time to evolve it as we see as a town council, but we also have a time to reflect on the section 19 findings as well. Okay. Right, councillor Sturridge.
Firstly, thank you for the report and thank you for the time put into this. It's a very serious matter and needs proper consideration. I'm presuming if we are going to put time into an event, that we should see if we can bring the other people involved in the report into that action plan so that it runs through both Buckinghamshire Council, be that via phone or in physically on the ground. Plus, obviously, fire service, declare interest. Because, you know, they're all key people who react to it and just seeing how it runs out in the ground would be, give some confidence to the public that their concerns, which were expressed fluently or have been, are being looked. Because what we can't do is, as the Chair, and quite like you said, is take on the financial responsibility which sits with Buckinghamshire Council, which has their lead role. But good report, as it will be a live document clearly. And as the Chairman's just indicated, it will be amended after the section 19 stuff and it should be a live document because nothing's ever forever, is it?
Thank you, councillor Sturridge. As from my perspective, I don't think Buckinghamshire Council is the funding body. It's one of many funding bodies to do some works on flood. But the Environment Agency is actually the river authority for the main river, that is the Great River Ews. So let's not forget the Environment Agency. And of course, some of us were in attendance for the public session with them last week, which perhaps personally speaking, I wasn't completely overwhelmed with the amount of information that was coming forward in terms of their proactiveness. So that's something we need to keep pushing out. But this is more about the way the local community works together and delivers on the ground assistance with all our other external agencies. And I think the one for me that is perhaps not as clear in the useful context is the transfer of bucks is not specifically mentioned. And of course, they are the highways authority for flooded roads and sandbag, emergency sandbags and surface water. So we might want to consider how the TFB elements are included in this. So it's not just river flooding, but surface water flooding too. So it'll be my main comments on this, but I'm happy to leave this in draft and evolving during the summer as we learn more. And I believe the floodmobile hopefully will be coming, is it 10th of July? Is it 10th of July? Has that been confirmed yet? Does anyone know?
No.
Right, okay. Right. Let's just have a look at my screen. So councillor Ozzy Bogdan.
Thank you, Chairman. And I commend the Town Clerk for the wonderful draft. I just have a few comments and I think my first is regards to the roles and responsibilities. I noticed that the community flood coordinator is a position reserved for the Town Clerk. I'm just going to raise that if he's not within jurisdiction, how then do they coordinate in the case of an emergency? Do we want to consider having flood marshals, someone who is within jurisdiction and that can help with coordination? I think the second point I would raise, and I think the Town Clerk has mentioned that, is having annual reviews. I think that's also very important, but also having that with the different stakeholders as raised by council staff. Another comment I will put in is with regards to drills. I think we might want to come to terms with it, that we will be having flooding once in a while. It's going to become an occurrence that we might have to live with and deal with. So the thing we need to do now is how do we address it when it comes up? So are we going to have regular drills, preferably during the summer? So that the volunteers and the coordinators can be prepared in case of an emergency. I think then the last thing I would say is, is it also possible for us to have a working group on for this particular issue of flooding? That might be something that we might also want to consider and be put into the draft document. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Paul, can you take some of those first?
Yeah, sure. In terms of the... Certainly, drill every year, I've talked about the exercise we'll try and do. In terms of the Marshals point, it's a really helpful point. One of the learning points for us from the Christmas event was, A, it was difficult for people who weren't in Buckingham to know what was going on. But it was actually very difficult, especially in the evening, to move across Buckingham anyway. So in terms of communications on the ground, it was very tricky. And so we had staff not in Buckingham who couldn't get here because of the way water was running on the highways. So we've tried to set the plan so that as much as possible can be done virtually. So you'll see there are people whose job it is to make phone calls and they've got phone lists. So as much as possible doesn't rely on people having to be outside and moving around. So there's quite a lot you can achieve like that. And certainly coordination, in a way, you don't want somebody coordinating right by the flood. You want someone coordinating a bit further away who can then have people going backwards and forwards. But certainly having a key member of the green spaces team, if possible, on the ground who can report back would also be really helpful. And they're one of the partners. If Borg took on the volunteering role, then they have their own management capacity on the ground. But overall, we have tried to make it as virtual as possible, which does make it a bit more of a flexible way of doing things. In terms of the working group, that's up for members, really. So if councillors would like a working group to review this, perhaps an annual working group to review the flood plan, which we could diary in. which we could diary in, and that way we could invite community partners into that meeting to have a kind of, to make sure we had a formal process reviewing this, rather than just having it on somebody's job list might be helpful to members to have that annual input.
Indeed, I'm just thinking aloud, a couple of us, John, I think you were also making the point just last week, that we need to have a number of our stakeholders around the table. It's not just the councils, not just the Environment Agency, there's also Anglian Water. Some of our major riparian owners, the university may well want to be involved, given the ownership of a good part of the loop. So I wonder what a good time to pencil that in is, as soon as we have a likely date for the section 19 to be published in draft. That might be a good time to actually compose a working group so we can review the section 19 and our own local knowledge and see how that, how we want to respond to, A, the section 19, but also if we need to reflect any changes or updates on the flood plan. Does that sound logistically possible, Paul?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. I'll see councillor Satchby has had his hand up for a little while, so I'll take councillor Satchby for the second time, and I'll take councillor Harvey for the second time, and then we'll draw this to a conclusion.
Or councillor Heatherington.
Councillor Heatherington as well.
I'm happy to wait, because I had my hand up, John actually put his hand up previously, and councillor Heatherington couldn't join the meeting until I gave her the access code. So maybe she's got something to say, so I'll follow those two, if that's all right, chairman. They could have said what I'm going to say anyway, who knows?
And councillor Harvey, then councillor Heatherington.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think it's a great piece of work. So thank you very much to the town clerk and everybody else who was involved in producing this. I presume he was involved as well. Couple of things really, one is I think it ought to be called the Buckingham Community Flood Response Plan. It's not the flood plan, because flood plan would involve prevention and thinking about its impact upon planning and all the other matters, which the plan rightfully doesn't cover. But it does cover how we respond to when flooding occurs. So I would propose that we call it the flood response plan, as opposed to the flood plan, to make that crystal clear as to what it's all about. Yeah, as you referenced, Warren, I think there are, there are many stakeholders involved in this. And given what we know about the Christmas flood, is that one of the biggest problems for some people wasn't just the river water, it was the surface water coming off Page Hill and maybe other sort of higher parts of the town that caused the drains to become overflowed and to mix with effluent sewage water as well. And I think, I'm not sure really whether this kind of covers it. But I'd be interested to know what the town clerk thinks about that. But I think we need to incorporate surface water flooding in this as well, which of course does link in with transport for Bucks, and of course, very much links in with Anglian Water as well. You've mentioned Borg a couple of times, it's mentioned in the report. If you don't know what Borg is, I'm not sure it's in the glossary, we might need to explain what Borg is. Because some people don't know what Borg is and our partnership with Borg. Resistance is futile and all that kind of stuff, of course. The other thing I would mention is, I'm not sure there's sufficient emphasis upon communication about the people who are at risk, who are in the kind of blue and light blue areas as put on the Environment Agency maps, whether they need some special treatment in terms of letting them have maybe a mini version of this plan, maybe some clarity upon who their emergency contacts are. Because I think what was problematic, for a variety of reasons at Christmas time previously, is communication. It's the old thing, communications, communications, communications. And whatever we can do to raise the awareness of people in the town, both those at risk, maybe those who are on the edges, who might need to be helping people who are at risk, the more we can do. And therefore, I think in some ways, there needs to be a, an action plan that goes alongside this plan, which is the enactment of the plan, as it were. And I think that needs to major on communication around it. And I would say we need to be looking at the whole system. I keep batting on about this. But the whole system is the whole system of all the stakeholders, but the whole water system. I mean, I had a long chat with a resident the other day whose house came very close to being flooded back at Christmas time, John Rooney. Terrific guy, obviously spent a lot of time, you know, his whole life in Buckingham, watching the river flow through the town. And he's noticed, for example, that there are some sluice gates near the Otters that are the kind of outflow from the pumping station next to Borden Meadow School that appear to be silted up and unable to be used. Now, if there is a problem with stall water, and we know about stall water from the Terry Cavan, the presentation we had a few weeks ago. But if there's a problem with stall water and the pumping station for the sewage not working properly, that sluice is meant to be the kind of release point, and it's not working. So there's a whole heap of, I mean, I wouldn't even begin to map it out. But there's a whole heap of engineering that needs to be resolved and connected and joined up so that we've got the best way of handling whatever floodwater, however it arrives. And we know from the meeting last week that what happened, it seems, sort of the line we're getting from the Environment Agency, is the reason that the warning didn't come through is because the river in Brackley was not rising. So the water happened somewhere, the rainfall happened somewhere between us and Brackley, and that's what caused the problem. And therefore, the river water in Brackley was not rising in the same way. That's what we've been told. So I think there needs to be a whole other sort of connections, and like I say, an action plan that go alongside this. And I very much approve of the idea of doing a simulation, even if it's only a desktop one, to test some of the principles that are contained within the plan, which overall is brilliant, and I commend it.
Thanks, John. Obviously, one of the challenges for us is to make sure that we hold the right agencies to account and that they actually undertake the work they need to do. So if it is the lead local flood authority, as in Buckinghamshire Council, or if it is the Environment Agency or others, I don't want us to have to take the financial hit.
Of course.
Managing that work. So I think it's going to be a balance, making sure that we, we have the community response for how we react on the day, but we also use our town council and BC councillors to make sure we are holding our other stakeholders to account. So there may be a role for some of the strategic stuff to be discussed at the community board, because there'll be similar issues that impacted Lechemstir, Tindric, Thornborough and others as well. So it would be, rather than repeat those conversations multiple times, the community board may well be better for some of those strategic issues to be discussed. So in terms of, oh, sorry, councillor Heatherington, sorry, you were patiently waiting, sorry.
I think you've actually beaten me to it by mentioning the outline villages. It's absolutely not Buckingham's problem, but Gorka and Tindrick were both very badly affected. Obviously, not from the river, but from the huge amount of groundwater that swept from the fields. But similarly, there was a need for transport for bucks and sandbags and clearing up afterwards. And so I was wondering if they might be invited to be part of any working groups that are going. But I think you've suggested that the community boards might be the place for that.
Indeed. In terms of cross-border working with all of North Bucks, the community board would definitely be the best place for that. And also, there would be potentially some resource that we could bid into for that. If it's either council, the county's flood budget, but that's not a huge budget, or from the community board's own budget. So there may be, there are actions that we want to promote locally. That could be a way to deliver them in conjunction with parish or town councils. Town clerk.
Yeah, just pick up on another point that was made, I think, by councillor Harvey. So councillor, so he'll remember that Terry Cavan did do a presentation to Environment Committee on his proposals to do with surface water and drains that might be amended to change our surface water flows around the town. I did undertake to ask for that to be reflected on in the S19 review. So Buckinghamshire Council officers from the Strategic Flood Team have said that that will be commented on by the S19 review. It'd be an expensive piece of work, so I don't think it's going to be something that happens immediately. But it will certainly at least be reflected on, and they're going to ask Anglian Water for a view as well. So at least we'll hopefully have a view back on whether that's something that might be helpful and viable.
Thank you. So councillor Satchby, we've probably got.
Yeah, well, thank you. Two of the points raised, which is great, which is the community boards plus the outline villages. I was in one of the outline villages the other day where flooding still is a common thing to my, in my other, wearing my other hat. That's still an ongoing issue there. Some of the issues still haven't been resolved, and we're all working our way out of this. But this document's a live document. Will we bring it back, just formally note it and agree it now, and bring it back when the section 19 stuff goes into it? And maybe it'll be in a more robust position at that point to make it, to agree. Because it could be some really good recommendations in that. And that may take some information in it to do with Kevin Cavanagh, Terry Cavanagh's point, which was a very good point about the redirecting the water along the bypass differently to what it is now. And it might be a more robust report, because we're going to need to, we're going to need to get some outside funding or something to actually resolve that issue on the bypass. I think the residents of Linda Village would probably get quite a good benefit from that if what's going on is suggested going on. And we do need to, if we formally agree it, should we just note it now and formally agree it when the section 19 stuff comes through? Because it's a live document, it'll be more full then.
Well, you've kind of reiterated what I said earlier, which was my proposal, that we note this and we take into account the section 19 report should be issued later this summer. I suspect probably towards the end of the summer, unless the town clerk has heard anything more up to date. And then as soon as we have any indication when that's going to be published, we then set up some kind of working group to just to review the draft section 19, as well as any implications on our own response. Flood plan. On the mayor, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I think it's really good the way that this has moved forward. As somebody who was a previous flood volunteer under the previous arrangements, we did do some of this, but it wasn't as structured as it is now. So I think this is real progress. My only concern about just noting it and then updating it after the section 19 is, what if next week we have another flood? Are we ready to respond if, because we just don't know when it will happen? We didn't predict that flood in December. It seemed to come upon us without any warning or with hardly any warning, and it could happen again. So is there something we can have in place? And, you know, this communication with the vulnerable residents, for instance, is there something we can do really quickly so that if it does happen again, we're ready? That's all.
Thank you. Good point. I would expect that this will be the draft flood plan until it becomes the not draft flood plan. Maybe the town clerk will can help us in terms of the vulnerable residents. I was under the impression that Buckinghamshire Council will be aware and have contact with all vulnerable residents that they're currently aware of through social services or children's services. Is there anything else in terms of vulnerable residents that we need to be aware of?
Well, so I guess you could class vulnerable residents as all those who are vulnerable of being to be flooded. From that point of view, we've certainly got a much better list of where those properties are now. We've got a script we could use, we've got really good links with partners and a really good understanding, I think, of what would need to be done. And we also have the link with Borg. So actually, if a flood were to happen tomorrow, I think we'd be fairly well placed to respond quite well, because we could send Borg out to houses and with a script. Obviously, what we don't have yet is something that all the houses have got that makes all this clear. So that's going to be one, and we won't be doing that for a little while. But I think we'd certainly be a lot better placed than we were in December. But we'll get better as time goes by, and once it's signed off, obviously, we'll be in a better place than we are now.
And obviously, one of the benefits, if we do get the floodmobile to Buckingham during the summer, is that residents will get a chance to see some of the latest property level protection features that they could be installing to also reduce their risk as well. So the sooner we can have that, the better. Councillor Schaefer.
I was going to wait to some other point, but I now do need to satisfy my curiosity. Please, what is Borg, other than a cube-shaped starship that is going to attack us?
I believe it's the Buckinghamshire and Oxfordshire Response Group.
It's the Buckinghamshire and Oxfordshire Off-Road Group. So they're a group of people with four by fours who are trained and coordinated to use their four by four vehicles to help whatever situation arises.
One of the things, one of the things that apparently happened, one of the things that apparently happened in December was because of the delayed official flood warning, that some of the support agencies and groups like Borg didn't get the official, the official warning, same as us and same as other organisations. So hopefully with the adjustments the EA have made to the flood warning system, that that won't happen again. Of course, that doesn't solve the December floods. Right, I'm conscious that we've got an awful lot of agenda items still to work through. I think we've got a general feeling around the committee that the draft is good. It will obviously need to be looked at again in light of the section 19 investigation, once that's published. So can we have in the action list to keep an eye out for dates of publication of section 19? So that we can then schedule in a working group to plough through that and see if it's telling us something we don't know already and who we need to start working with in terms of trying to deliver some of the recommendations that may well be in that section 19 report. Does that sound like a plan? Shall I go for a formal vote action, this is so that we can formally note the draft plan? And with the town clerks, I think you sort of inferred that this will be the plan until it gets updated. Is that right? So, yeah, okay. So on that basis, are we happy to note this plan? So those in favour?
Yes, for me.
That is unanimous.
Thank you very much. I just wonder, Paul, could we formally write to Buckinghamshire Council just to see if they've got a date yet on when they plan for the draft section 19 to be published, so we can try to preempt that?
Yeah.
That would save me writing as well as a councillor, because I was going to do that later this week. Excellent. Right, really important topic. We gave that a good airing, so thank you very much for your contributions. Another important topic to us is the Bucks Healthcare Trust note from Greg Smith MP to note. Town clerk, is there anything else we need to not understand the context that this note came from? Obviously, I know the context in terms of our healthcare provision, but the context of why this note in particular.
No, I think it's fairly self-explanatory to be honest. Members raised concerns, and that was the response that we've had.
Okay, so this is to do with Buckingham Hospital?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Satchby?
I need just to note that the response is shorter than the question and which is probably larger than the problem and larger than the concerns. I don't think we can, this is something we're going to have to return through another juncture, chairman. Tonight's not the time to do that. I think it's something we need to talk about again, bring it back at some point. Because it's a very big topic. You've got history, everybody's got history in this topic. And the answer wasn't forthcoming. So I think, note the response and soldier on, I think.
Okay, I must admit, I had a different conclusion. I quite was impressed that it was a short and sweet response from the NHS, rather than try to hide the answer in a very long two or three page letter. So the fact that they've made it very clear that there has been no change, that's good. Obviously, we've got a long-term issue in terms of what the plans of Bucks Healthcare Trust for community hospitals is long term. But like you say, that needs to be another agenda item at another date. Councillor Ozzy Bogdan, and then councillor Davies.
Chairman, I just want to find out, because I don't know the background of this report, but did we conduct an investigation to find out if this actually was the case before we brought this request to the MP? And if we did, what was our findings? Because if our findings is different from what has been said here, then we have something to respond with, which I think we should then take on.
Chair, do you want me to respond to that? So the concerns were raised specifically by Geraldine Collins, councillor Geraldine Collins, in the meeting, I think, with examples that she had heard directly. So the concerns were raised locally. So clearly, the response from Neil McDonald differs to what councillors had been told by local people. So it doesn't necessarily add, the response doesn't necessarily add clarity. So I suppose it's for members to either, do we want to go back and investigate further or ask councillors for further views before we go back? Or do we take it as it is and do something else for now?
Thank you. Unfortunately, for. Thank you. Unfortunately, for 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 quite some time, well, ever since the minor injuries unit was closed down back in the two thousands. Um there's always been rumour and myth and um and lack of trust of the long term ambitions of Bucks Healthcare Trust. But in terms of, you know, I think we have to take a formal response from the chief exec at face value that if that's what he says, unless we have specific examples that we can refer to. I I don't really want to waste this time, this committee's time on just rumour or anecdotes. I think we need to have some evidence. Um if there are changes to the um actual operation of the hospital at the moment. What the future plans are for the community hospital, of course, is a completely different topic, um which I'm more than happy to come back to. Um when we can schedule the appropriate time on the agenda. But I'm happy to accept the response at the moment, but I do have councillor Davies waiting to contribute and councillor Heatherington.
Thank you, Chair. Um I I would just like to to note that um I don't feel that the response actually um answers the question. Um because the the um the question is um whether there are plans to make substantial changes to the pattern of services at the hospital in my reading of it. And the response is that there has been no change. There's no nothing, there's nothing in that response to say whether there's any any um um plans um for the for the future. Um I I think that there is waffle there, um and I wouldn't be happy with um with um accepting that as being um um factual in the case.
Um thank you. I must admit, I read it differently, that 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 comment at the top of the page um of appendix D is is in response to the previous letter, which we don't have sight of tonight, where there have already committed that there are no plans for substantial change. I don't know, Paul, do you can help me on this? Obviously, I've not seen that actual response, but I think the point you're you're referring to, Fran, is 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 relating to the previous meeting that had already been confirmed. And I really don't want to reopen that again if we can't help it. Town clerk, can you?
So um I'm I'm trying to recall the original letter, but I think uh obviously, we'd asked Greg Smith, and he did come back saying that there weren't any plat- any um planned substantial changes and which which was a clear answer to a clear question, but councillors in that meeting queried the accuracy of that, which is why we went back with the further question.
So this is this, so am I right in assuming this was a clarification of that original response?
Yes.
Okay. Right, councillor Heatherington.
Um I was, um a couple of months ago, I had to have a chest X ray, having had um a che- a a respiratory disease. Um and I was told that they don't, they don't have X ray at Buckingham Hospital. So is that the normal service?
Who who was they?
Um I my my consultant at um Stoke Mandeville said I was to have a um a chest X ray. And so I said, oh, um I think I can go to Buckingham for that, can't I? And she said, um, oh, no, I know you, they don't do it there. And I have, I have asked other people and I've been told that they don't do chest X rays there.
Well, I tell you, the friends at the hospital would be very surprised, given the amount of money they spent on that X ray machine. Um I I I know it's a bit personal, so I know I don't want you to share any more uh than necessary, but you might want to bring that up with pals and re- report that because that sounds like you've got you've got some bad advice from Stoke Mandeville. Um uh right, uh but councillor Ozzy Borgan, and then I'll finish off with councillor Sash because we need to conclude this item.
Yes, I'm thinking very much, Chair, and um I I I do rely on what councillor Heatherington just said now. The question was clear, withdrawal of shop term and respite care beds and radiography services from Buckingham. So if this had been withdrawn, it's a statement of fact. We should conduct an investigation, find out what's going on. If it's been done, then we can then respond to the chief executive. And I think that's that's what my recommendation will be. Thank you.
Well, depending on you, Sue, and obviously it's your 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 personal experience, but if you wanted to share that, we could certainly respond back and say, well, actually, one of our councillors had this direct experience. I mean, that might be what a way just to flush this out. Um so if you want to ponder that for a second, I'll come back to you if you want, but councillor Sash is next.
I know the chairman's points about mischus going back to when the um, you know, the daycare and emergency services type stuff moved. And then, of course, we had the Emberton unit, which was removed. And then we had the historical discussion about bed reductions in there, which ended up going from twenty to sixteen. Now I think they're twelve or fourteen. So the the projection and the travel has been downwards um for a long time and and there is the the perception, though it's unfortunately not true, that people contribute to the League of Friends and and then when they want to get respite bed, they find they can't. That's because there's a limited amount of respite beds in Buckinghamshire because decisions were taken about other units. Now, I believe some of them beds came back available during the Covid period. But I think um um because they needed beds. So um I think that Buckingham Hospital is is far too important asset for us to ignore, and I'm minded to um that's the Fran Davis interpretation of what's actually in front of us, which is all she can read. And there is a contradiction between the two passages. So I think we do need to A, go away and ask further questions based upon what members have said. We don't need to do large bodies of research, which is a way of throwing stuff into the long grass every time. You've got to prove thing. We are elected members. We've had a we've had a a concern raised by elected councillor Everton, and we've had a question raised by councillor Fran Davies, which I think is sufficient enough for us to go back and ask an additional question. Um and about, because their feeling is those two things haven't been answered. And I think we should do that as a matter of course, and not try to um overcomplicate. Well, there is a body for doing this. It's called the Health and um Committee of Buckinghamshire Council, where if we feel strong enough, we do have that route to raise questions. But I don't think we're at that point yet with this. Um we should really only take stuff there if it's um if it's absolutely important. But there is always the outchairman, the outstanding issue um that we haven't actually fulfilled as a councillor, which I'm sure the town clerk is keen to fulfil, was a public meeting around the the three issues around health in Buckingham, which um may be a good venue for all these dragons to be laid or slain or opened up. So I think until we get to that point, and which probably clearly after announced today is going to be a little bit further ahead um by the Prime Minister. But I do think there are dragons out there and they need to be exercised, because none of us would want to lose anything. Uh none of us would want to see services removed. Um I've personally been tangling with the N H S from two O five. I've even mentioned in Hansard um tangling with the N H S. So I've got a bit of background on this and um so I do think that those two councillors made very good points, councillor Everton and councillor Fran Davies, and we must respect them points and respond appropriately.
Thank you. I I I I don't want to reopen a a letter that's already been responded to and it's it's you you're referring to a statement that's referring to a previous minute of a meeting as a response. So I I I want to make sure that we're asking Bucks Healthcare Trust a new, fresh question with evidence, not to go back to one that's already been dealt with. Because that undermines our position of having a strong, a strong case of what we're trying to really ask. Um I'll take uh councillor Donohue and then we'll wrap up with councillor Heatherington.
Thank you. Um I didn't know if that he was putting a proposal on the table to um to do some investigating, to make sure that this um what we've been told is factual. But if that was a proposal, I'd like to second it because I think it's definitely worthwhile to get our ducks in a row. And then we've got some ammunition to go back with.
Yeah, that sounds possible. Um councillor Heatherington, then you've got the final say on this one.
My experience wasn't quite as I I rec- recollected it. What happened was a prior to the um the chest X ray, I'd I injured myself and I had a telephone consultation, which is a really bad way of trying to find out if you've broken your arm. Um and the uh G P said, go and go and get an X ray. Um and so I kind of vaguely heard that they they might do them at Buckingham. So I said, oh, I can get that done at Buckingham, can't I? And he said, oh, I'm not sure. And he said, I'll go and find out. And he came back and he said to me, no, you can't have it done there. So then later on, when I saw my consultant at Stoke Mandeville, um she, well, that was a telephone consultation as well. She said, you need a chest X ray. So I said, oh, I don't want to go traipsing all the way to um. By this time, I thought they don't do chest X, any kind of X rays at Buckingham. So I said, um instead of coming um to Stoke, can I go and have it done at Milton Keynes? And she said, no, that's difficult because the electronic communication doesn't work with me um so well. So you will have to come to Stoke. So by that time, I've just taken it as a fact that they don't do X rays at Buckingham because the G P at the Swan practice had told me that.
Thank you. Um I I mean, would you be happy for that that experience to be shared in response to the chief exec's response, which is to contradict his his point?
Yes, absolutely.
That's a proposal I'll second it.
Okay. Um shall we do that first and then uh maybe come back, Lisa, and add a to something more serious to see what will we get back from that? And then we can think about what, because obviously there is a there's a bigger fear here about what the future of the hospital is, but I prefer to, we spend the time on the actual issue now. Um and then think about what evidence we want to find or seek, um if there's a more systemic issue. Um if it's a local that's badly briefed or if it's the Swan practice I'd forgotten about, I can't believe the Swan practice would forget that they they there are historic links with the hospital. Um so it's all very strange. Uh so it would be good to get a get to the bottom of that one. So, Robyn, did you say you supported that?
Yes.
Okay, um and councillor Heatherington, are you happy with we we go that route?
Yeah, absolutely.
If we're using your your evidence, I just want to make sure you're happy with that.
Yes, absolutely. Do I need to um put that into writing to someone?
Just liaise with Paul or or and that might be the best thing.
Yep.
Okay, and then we'll come back to this. Um hopefully sooner rather than later, we see what we do next. Does that sound like a plan? Because obviously, uh as Robyn's inferred, we're not going to have a public meeting quite yet, so we've got a little bit more time to get our ducks in the ducks in a row. Jolly good. Uh we'll come back to this then at a at a future meeting. Uh Paul, you've got an action there to follow up with, Sue. Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Right, um. So I'm working off one screen, so I'm just trying to get back to my agenda. Eleven, uh the Buckinghamshire Local Natural, sorry, Nature Recovery Strategy Pilot. Uh we've got an update, appendix E. Who's taking us through this?
Uh so really, this is just for information. So this is something uh Leird received and we thought members of the committee would find it helpful background.
Great. Um councillor Sashri?
This is a lovely photograph of my friend Bill Chapel. Um on the front of it, he's he looks very good in open the field. He looks almost like he's happy there. Um from his previous profession, um a good photograph of Bill. But I do think we just note it and bring it and anything from it bring to other documents we do ourselves.
Yep, that that would um mirror my thoughts that there's some good stuff in this, but um there obviously already has been consultation with those interested and have got involved with it. So I think we just keep an watching eye on this, see what happens. If any good ideas come out of the pilot, then there may be things we want to consider at a local level. Um okay, to note. Thank you very much. Uh which brings us on to item twelve. We've got a verbal update on the Holocaust memorial stone. Uh Lee, is this for you?
Uh yeah, it was just to um update everyone um on where we're at. It was originally agreed, I think by T C and E first, that a memorial, a Holocaust memorial stone um uh get created. And we've been, it's just to update everyone uh where we're at ready. Um so Nina has been working hard to try and find a stonemason, which was a bit tough uh for various reasons, but um we have found a good stonemason who I met the other day up at the cemetery uh whilst he was working up there. And we found a piece of stone from the cemetery, uh quite a sizable sizable piece of stone that he thinks he can work with. Uh so we're in discussions, getting prices and sort of organising exactly what we want. Um we will bring it back to the next meeting, a bit more detail and talk about costs and that kind of thing. Um and how we actually do it. We we may end up moving it ourselves in house and then the stonemason working on it in situ. Um because that'll help sort of keep the costs down to sort of a reasonable level. Um but yeah, that's about it so far. Uh it's a work in progress and we'll have a lot more information hopefully for next meeting.
Thank you, Lee. Um is there a budget line for this year or is this time for next year?
I think there was near marked reserve of a thousand pounds, I believe, put aside uh already. Um but again, we need, we may well have to come back with a bit more detail on that uh for next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um councillor Sashri?
Um just to partly answer what you said, um the events committee earmarked a thousand pounds for this budget based on a report from the town clerk, based on what the estimation of the cost would be, based on the fact that we would probably be using stone what we didn't have to buy. So and the aspirations was to move swiftly on with this and um um as soon as possible and put it in a sympathetic place, which was quite for reflection. Now, I'm pleased that it's moving along. Um the the money's in budget for it. If I'm hearing that it's um going to be um more than a thousand pounds to do the carving on the stone. Um I because I presume we'll place this ourselves, not the stonemason um with our own um green spaces team. I presume that they'll just level one side of the stone off and carve on it. Is it you're suggesting that there's more than a thousand pounds cost in putting the letter in? And I believe there's from without the paperwork in front of me, there's a special um insignia that you have for the Holocaust. It's a I can't, I can see it in my head, but there's a special thing that you put on stonework and for the remembrance for it. It's just, I'd like to see this at least done so we meet this. I think it's in the autumn um at this day. So I think it's been nice to know that we at least get to it. If it's not in the autumn, it's in the beginning of the new year, that we at least get it in for this year. Um so that we can, Margaret Gate, we can um at least open it and um and we can at least have it there because the the strength's feeling around this. Holocaust Day is not just about the Holocaust. It's about all sorts of tragic um extreme losses of life around the world like this, so people can use it for reflection. I hope it will be, but I furthermore, you suggested, Lee, that there's a bigger cost than a thousand pounds, which we allocated based on the report from the town clerk.
We're right waiting or awaiting the quote to come back. Um because originally, the original quote included the cost of the stone, which was quite a a piece of stone, which was quite substantial. But we've had further discussions. I'm going to use some stone from the cemetery, which will save us a lot of money. Uh so there will be the stonemasons' costs and then some costs for us actually moving the bit of stone. We're going to have to hire a bit of machinery. And just to go back on, you said timings, uh the actual Holocaust Day is in January. Um but we, well, we're still considering locating it. Uh we think Bolton Park, but we're not sure exactly where. And but I want, I I am very aware of the Bolton Plu- Born Park does flood. So we may, what I may mean to do is get this piece of stone in at least uh in the autumn uh before, and you know, there's less chance of flooding then. And then he's got a bit of time to work on it, um plenty of time to work on it before the January date. So that's the plan at the moment. But again, like I said, we're going to come, we're going to come back with more detail at the next meeting.
I mean, if there's any additional costs, um um.
Robyn, it's not, this isn't a conversation. We need to, we need to keep this uh short and sweet um and to the point. So I've got councillor Harvey, who's integrated stick.
Yeah, my suggestion would be to place the stone in the corner to the east of the car park. So it would be somewhere where you could perhaps sit on one of the picnic benches there and gaze up towards that corner um where 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 there's some grass and some trees, I think. Uh that would be well outside the flood zone. Um it's also a place people could sit and reflect, because I think putting a stone without any seats nearby would sort of defeat the object a little bit. And I think it would be tucked away somewhere quiet um where people could could go if they if if they so wish. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I'm on board. Yeah, put it on board.
Thanks. So if anyone else has suggestions, um, obviously fire them off to Lee and we can come back with, um, if there's one favourite or if there's a few to discuss and see what would work best, um, sounds like a plan. Um, so hopefully the next meeting we'll have some more details. Okay, uh, oh, sorry, Counselor Willis, sorry, Mr. Hounds, uh, you've got the last word here.
Oh, no worries. It's lighting elsewhere. Um, yeah, I, I was just wondering, what would people's feelings be? Um, if it was at the opposite end of Waitrose Car Park? So you've got the waterfall there and then you've got the steep hill. Uh, could that be a possible place for, um, us to place the Holocaust memorial stone?
It is a possibility, um, but you know, we don't own the land there. That's the only issue. We'd have to get permission and agreement from Bucks Council.
Okay, understandable.
Okay, and probably not impossible, but it's just another, another hurdle to, to deal with if it's not on our own land. Um, okay, and so full steam ahead, hopefully subject to receiving the quotes so we can discuss those and agree on location. So, uh, I think we've received and discussed your verba reportedly. Thank you very much. Um, right, next up is, well, can't say we don't just talk about a wide range of really important issues. So another important issue, I, I, item thirteen is the Climate Emergency Action Plan. Um, Appendix F, who will be updating us on this? Is this you, Paul?
Nina.
Nina, thank you, Paul.
It's fine.
What was yours?
So we've got the Climate Change Emergency Action Plan. Um, for some of our newly elected members, this will be the first time you're receiving the document. So this came off the back of full council's declaration of climate emergency back in July twenty nineteen. Um, so we agreed an action plan, which has, as you'll see from the attachment, five priority areas, energy, transport, food and land, economy, housing and waste and community engagement. Um, so it has within the action plan, there are measures to deliver objectives. So both within the council and then encouraging action across the town within our community. Um. We review this at all of our committees, but it has an annual review at full council. So this was reviewed in March of this year. Um, and Environment sort of has an ownership of it. Um, so Environment reviews all of the actions, whereas individual committees just receive a condensed version of the action plan, which looks at their own individual actions, which is why you've got such a large document this evening. Um, so when you receive the action plan, really you're looking for the highlights, you're looking for the reds. So that's anything that we've updated. Um, so this time really, it's just a note to say that we are arranging, I'll just go. So I've got a split screen. Um, so this is action point nine. So it's just an update to say that we, with, in conjunction with the tree wardens and Buckinghamshire Council, will be arranging a tree planting event, um, in autumn and winter. So that's likely to be Heartlands and Lace Hill. So we haven't confirmed an actual date yet, but it will be circulated. And then the other updates are agenda items. So agenda item fourteen, which talks about recycling in the offices, which addresses that particular action. Um, and litter picking. So these, the two items that we have, um, the litter picking with the youth club, which we're hoping will still be able to go ahead on the eighteenth of July, um, and also the quick litter pick initiative, which is agenda item sixteen. And then if you scroll down, the next highlighted action is, again, we're talking about sort of waste and litter. So quick litter pick, but also the most recent initiative that we've undertaken within the community and schools in particular was, um, a litter pick, uh, litter and recycling post competition with the primary school at Borton Meadow, uh, which was really successful. We had, I think, over eighty entries. And I think those are all of the updates for tonight. But of course, we'll take any questions on any of those items.
Thank you, Nina. Um. I wasn't sure if it's a, an error on the sheet, but between fourteen and fifteen, there's rainwater harvesting without a number. Um. Just wondered if that was either part of something else or if it's just a, 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 a formatting error. But my, my observation on the rainwater harvesting, I wondered how the, how the council considered existing buildings, not just new buildings. Because the two chapels in the cemetery, um, would be ideal places for simple water butts that people could use. Um, very cheap and cheerful and a good way to get cracking on, on that. Um, don't have to wait for new builds to retrofit water harvesting. So that'll be my, my two penneth at this early stage. Um. So I've got Counselor Ralph and then Counselor Stutchbury.
Thank you, Chair. Um, item nine, to do with the trees. Um, the next year is the Queen's Platinum Jubilee and the, the whole thing revolves around a green canopy project. And I know the Buckingham Society are looking to do something and I wondered if there could be some liaison between the Buckingham Society and the town council with a view to doing something that does go forward, uh, highlighting that particular project.
Well, that sounds a great idea. Um. Paul, uh, uh, with that, is that, is that a environment, uh, full council or?
I think it's, it's as far as it's tree planting, it'd be environment. So we can definitely have that conversation. I mean, we, we, as a town council in terms of our estate, we do have an issue in terms of how much space we've got for new trees at the moment. Obviously, once we've designed the new cemetery, that will give us a great opportunity to do some more planting once we take ownership of that land.
And one of the things we might want to consider is if there's part of, uh, one of Buckinghamshire Council's parks, that would be benefit from serious tree planting, then we work in conjunction with the Community Board and maybe even joint fund it, um, which would benefit Buckingham, but also get someone else to contribute to funding that. Uh, Counselor Ralph?
Thank you for letting me come back, Chair. Um, I was just going to say, if, uh, Lee or somebody could perhaps liaise with Mrs. Cummings, um, she has some ideas and one of the ideas was to do with the Heartlands, which of course county own rather than the town. So, um, you, you're really talking our language, Chair.
Lee, did you have something specific on that one?
Yeah, so one of the next, um, or the next tree plant, planting project we have on our list, which we didn't get to this last winter, uh, because of, we couldn't get, um, volunteers down there to help us is in the Heartlands. Um, there was two parts to that. One was continuing a row of black populas, which are in the middle of the, middle of the park there. And then almost gapping up on the mounds of, of some existing tree planting. Um, and I've been discussing it with the tree officer at, um, Bucks Council, um, there. But yeah, we're always, always looking for more opportunities. And that's something we've been working with the tree wardens to try and help us identify some more locations around the town. Uh, so yeah, we're always, always looking for, for future projects as well.
Thank you, Lee. Um, okay, this sounds something to consider. Uh, Counselor Stutchbury's next.
I think it's worth noting, Chairman, that, that since Council Neil took most of the council and we've done all this, that we've come a long way. Um, many of the, it's, it's never improving subject matter and those elements on air of events will take, I'm going to meet it tomorrow. I presume some of those elements of the River Rins and that next year will be, hopefully be able to do a proper public River Rins. We weren't able to do one this year. We did it, um, just on our own, which has always been a great environmental project and and we were thinking of doing lip, lip, lip picking at the same event. So I think there's a lot of, um, there's a lot escaping this here, but I do think we ought to note how hard work the officers have done keeping this report going, especially through Covid and moving some of this stuff through. And I think we should be grateful for that work because, um, they've had to work in quite in isolation, but they've kept it moving and that's the important thing and kept, kept us travelling in the right direction, Jim. And so that needs to be recorded in minutes. Our thanks for their time on this.
Thank you, Counselor Stutchbury. Um, have I missed any other hands for this item? No? Okay. Uh, thank you, Nina, for your update. Um. And Lee, you'll come back with some more details on tree planting, uh, when you've had some news from Buckinghamshire Council. Okay. Um, right, and how do we want to action? Counselor Ralph's suggestion of formalising, doing something uh, next year, because I think that's a cracking idea, actually. The Buckingham, um, marks quite a significant event, uh, which actually suits our agenda as well as the national agenda, which is the tree canopy one. So do you want to formally mark that?
If you're happy, Chairman, I'll put it on the event's agenda and then come back to you for the event tomorrow.
Um, I don't think it was actually an event we were talking about, but actually, uh, an environmental project that would mark it. So I don't know, Counselor Ralph, if, if I've interpreted what you suggested properly?
Sometimes, sometimes the space bar works and sometimes it doesn't. Then you have to go for the mouse. Uh, thank you again, Chair. Um, really, this led from Mrs. Cummings and the Buckingham Society. So I, I, as a first step, it would be very good to have a liaison with them, I think, so that we don't trip over each other, but work in concert. Um, and then it, we could one, really worry about which committee looks after it, uh, as a second stage.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, oh, Nina, sorry.
Could I, I was just going to add that, um, I think it was about two years ago now, when the Queen's Commonwealth Project was first initiated, we were given, um, a load of whips, basically, loads of tiny little plants, which we then distributed to our tree wardens to, um, to foster, to bring on, um, in their own greenhouses and gardens. I don't think all of them have survived. I think there was, I think we started with about fifteen. Um, but some of them have, some of them have grown on, um, and they, they were, they call them the Her Majesty's Tree. So it would be great if we could combine that and actually get those in the ground. But as Paul said, it's, it's about finding the appropriate place for them. But it would be great to get the tree wardens in conjunction with Buckingham Society to arrange something. But we, we do have a commitment within this action plan to say that once a year, we will, as a minimum, arrange a tree planting project.
Excellent. Okay, um, presumably we'll get some details of that sooner rather than later, given the, the ideal window. As John was saying, we're, winter's coming, so we'll need to get ready for some tree planting. Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, uh, for those contributions. Um. Right, uh, Repair Cafe, item fourteen. Uh, back to you, Lee.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so we, we had a proposal put to us by a member of the public to, uh, set up, uh, a volunteer, um, repair cafe. And, uh, so hopefully in the report, it details of what they're, what they're asking for, for a bit of help. Um, basically setting, setting the thing up really. Um, and I've, yeah, we, I've listed, um, listed what, what they need to help, which is, yeah, holding the finances for the project to get it going. Um, and help in application for funding, because I believe the member of public have been already talking to the, um, to Bucks Council about getting some funding, uh, which she seems to think was pretty positive. And then help, um, help promote the group. Uh, and it was just to get the support of the committee, really.
Excellent. I, I, I do love the ideas of these. I know they have worked quite well in, in some locations, but they do need some dedicated volunteers to push it, push, to push them on and have the passion to share their desire to fix stuff and give them another life. Um. That's when they really succeed. Um, and I mean, I think you're right. I'm sure the Community Board would be keen to support something like this, uh, given its own community development role as well as the environmental, uh, role it plays. Uh, Counselor Donna here, I see you've got your hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is a wonderful idea. Um, lots of people, uh, prepare, repair and reuse. I know I do, um, in my craft work. So, um, yeah, I'm totally for this idea. We, you know, we hold money for other purposes and other groups, so I can't see that being an issue at all. Uh, I think we should, um, get behind this a hundred percent. I love the idea.
Thank you. That sounds like a thumbs up to this idea. Anyone else want to contribute? Thumbs up there from Counselor Harvey.
Just proposed, we agree, Chairman.
Yeah, I was just, I was just trying to refresh my memory and I think, um. Yeah, so I think there are three already in Buckinghamshire. Um, one are the nails we're asking Clinton. I think there's one in Mire as well. So it'd be worth finding out how they sustain themselves. Uh, because obviously if they've learned lessons, they may even be one in Princess Risberg. I'm not sure if that's still going or not.
It has it in the report. Sorry, Chairman, listen, the report where the other.
I thought, I knew I saw it somewhere.
I, I think that the report, it outlines, um, like all the, all the, the, the questions that we'd have. I think the report answers all of those. So they've done their homework, basically.
Thank you. I knew I read it somewhere. Thanks for reminding me. I mean, so, uh, well, shall we just take a vote on this one? I think if we want to support this idea, um.
One, two, three. That is unanimous.
Okay, so obviously there's still lots to do in terms of funding and all the rest of it, but in terms of getting it to the next stage, we support the principle. So that's, that's good. Thank you. Um. Uh, Lee, is that for you then to follow up? Is this? Excellent. Okay, we'll come back to that in another meeting and when we've got a bit more info on, on what happens next. Excellent. Um, right, recycling provision for council premises. Uh, oh, Lee, it's a busy evening for you.
Sorry, my computer's going slow as well. Um, yeah, again, hopefully the report explains it. It's just to get, um, put provision in so that we can have recycling in our office, offices. Uh, the idea is that we put a mixed recycle wheelie bin up at Lace Hill, where we've got room for it, and then we collect the stuff from the offices, the T I C, um, all, all our buildings, and then every fortnight we'll go and empty it up there. So it's just laying out the costs, costs for those bins.
Thank you, Lee. Uh, Counselor Stutchbury?
Proposed a green report, Chairman.
Okay, I just had one question on it. Um, sorry, Counselor Willis, was that a support or a question?
Oh, to support.
Okay, I just want clarification. Um, I couldn't find out if the recycling bins you're suggesting have actually been made from recycled plastic or not.
That's a good question and I will find out.
Uh, because ideally, um, if we're promoting recycling, it's greater the receptacle you're actually using has been recycled too, rather than using uh, virgin plastic. Um, that's just a personal preference.
I'll find out. Certainly the, uh, we got some new bins up at the cemetery and they were recycled. So, yeah.
Excellent. Okay, so subject to that, are we happy to agree?
Yes.
Want to see no dissent? Thank you very much. And oh, I've gone, lost my agenda now. Excuse me a second. Uh, so sixteen, park furniture. Um, and it's the Lee Phillips Show this evening.
Lucky me. Um, it was just to update everyone where we're on, um, on the various different things to do with street furniture around the place. So we were successful in the Community, Community Board funding bid. Uh, so I'm working on at the moment a circular bench to go in Chandos Park, um, to go around the existing silver birch tree. Uh, so there's already a tarmac path to it. Uh, and we've got some nice designs coming up, uh, and I'm working on two or three different sort of companies and getting, getting the best price that I can. And again, we'll bring some detail back for that one. Um, I've got prices in for some picnic benches, some access, accessible picnic benches, uh, of the same design that we've already put in Borton Park, uh, and find, found the locations for that. Um, and again, get, I've got prices ready for stuff in the town centre to match existing, uh, that was all previously agreed. One thing that we were, I had been working on though is we wanted an additional litter bin, uh, down in Borton Park, near the mugger, near one, where some of these benches are going in. And we've always used a certain supplier so that they all match with different colours and finishes. But unfortunately, that supplier have stopped making them. I've just found out last week. So I'm in the process of finding something that will look fairly similar, but be slightly larger, hopefully. So that's again, work in progress. Um. Yeah, to try and find something similar and other good prices, a bit tricky. So I'm working on that. Uh, we've also been working on, we put some new, we've got a new pole bin up at Liddles, uh, a few weeks ago. Um, that was in conjunction with Bucks Council who emptied it. We provide the bin and they emptied it and they agreed to that. And we're also, work in progress is Tindric Road, where we're putting another one of the pole bins and a dock bin. And again, we're just waiting for confirmation from Bucks Council, uh, to get, to go ahead on that. So there are lots of different things going ahead. Um, most of the, the street furniture we'll install ourselves. Some of, some is a lot easier than others. Uh, so it's trying to schedule it in around other jobs that we've got. Uh, we, we've already purchased some new litter bins for the cemetery. Um, so we're going to, that'd be the next job. Um, that the guys can do around all the other stuff they've got to do, grass cutting and, uh, we've got quite a lot of repairs to play areas and stuff like that. So hopefully over the summer, we'll start seeing, seeing some of these go, going in. So hopefully over the summer we'll start seeing, seeing some of these goes in, going in. Um, but yeah, it was just to update everyone where we're at on a lot of stuff we're doing at all at the same time, really.
Thank you, Lee. About Council case, Lee, uh, Stutchbury and Harvey, uh, for this one.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, it's a difficult one because following up from what councillor White said a few minutes ago about using recycled material, I know there is street furniture available that's in recycled plastic, I think. And I've seen some of it and it does look quite reasonable. But I do appreciate the point that you're trying to match existing and it clearly wouldn't match existing. But I wonder whether it would be worth investigating getting recycled plastic. I'm not sure. I, I think it was something very specific that they, they use. It might even be tyres or something like that. But I, I saw some, I can't even remember where, quite an extensive collection of this recycled material in street furniture with a little explanation alongside it about where has it come from? And I thought that was a really good idea, but it probably won't match anything else.
That's something I'm considering, um, on various different things. It depends what and where it is, obviously, um, for the suitability. But, you know, if it's timber, for example, we're always getting FSC approved. Um, but yeah, uh, the, yeah, the recycled plastic products are getting better all the time. So it's something I'm always looking at.
Thank you, Lee. Um, councillor Stutchbury and councillor Harvey.
I'm conscious that what councillor Katey said is a good idea, Chairman, but we, we need to, um, make sure that if we move, though we move at a step change with stuff rather than, um, the incremental change, because form, the conformity of the parts is quite important and recycling is important. But just, the question was, you did mention additional dog bins and that. Did you resolve the, I don't know where we resolved the correspondence, if I didn't answer, I apologise, Lee, to do with the additional request for, um, dog bins to do with Lace Hill, where that was, or whether that wasn't with you. Um, there was a request up there, um, to do with dog bins.
Yeah, so a lot of the estates is still with the management company, I believe, up there. Um, I know they have certain bins up there. I couldn't find exactly where. But on, on our, on our land ourselves at Lace Hill, we've got two sort of well positioned. And they, they did ask for one on the other side of the pitches, which wasn't suitable. Um, just because you need to get a vehicle to it and it, yeah, so I think what we've got there is fairly good, but.
You thought it was an ongoing issue some weeks back about, um, dog fowling and, and, and obviously bins do need to be put in place. Coincidentally, we still haven't managed to, um, after eight years to get all the section thirty eights agreed according to my correspondence today. So, um, um, perhaps when we have our ten years anniversary of that estate, um, everything would have been transferred to Buckinghamshire Council. Uh, I don't think it's Buckinghamshire Council's fault. I think it's the developer not meeting their requirements of the councils. I'm not trying to blame them. But I do think it's, uh, why that's not happened, these, we're gonna continue to have these requests which are difficult to meet. I think we need to, um, formulate how we're gonna deal with them, because we, obviously the constituents.
Can I say that for another agenda item? Because, um.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Sounds like Lee's got this in action, so I think we can leave that one at that. Um, how's Harvey?
Yeah, just a brief point to say if we've got scope to be putting in some new benches or picnic benches and so on, maybe combine that with a decision about where the Holocaust memorial goes. I just, you know, finesse the two together is all I'm saying.
Yep, indeed. I know there's a little bit more work in logistics, but if, if, if we do move to a different design, a different supplier, you can consolidate the old stuff in one location and use the new stuff in another, rather than sort of, uh, hotspots it around. So it's a little bit more effort, but it can be done in a sort of phased way. And I'm sure you've already thought about that, Lee. Um, excellent. Um, okay, so we know your report. Um, and this leads very neatly on to quick litter pick, um, again to you.
I think this is my one, so, um, hashtag quick litter pick. Um, this is an initiative which we started, um, this has come from the office really. So it started in March of this year when we were receiving a number of, um, concerns about litter in Bolton. Um, I think it was at a time during the school holidays, there was a number of people gathering. And we also had a number of requests from people and community groups that wanted to undertake their own community litter picks, but they didn't have the right equipment. Um, we could see how popular that was actually off the back of one of our other, um, post campaigns, um, where we could see children and families in particular were going out with their own litter picks, um, and just conducting their own little mini sweeps of the park and the town. So, um, in conjunction with Ruth Newell, who was the Chair of Environment at the time, this was during Perder as well. We came up with this initiative, which is based on the two-minute beach clean, which you may have seen in coastal towns. So what you would do is you would phone up the, the tick, the town, uh, tourist information centre or our office, and you would get a four-digit PIN number, which will not change, which gives you access to this bin as pictured in the report. Inside the bin are five litter pickers and a roll of bags. And so, um, enthusiastic residents can, would go along, obviously sanitize, and go out and conduct a little sweep of the park. And then depending on how much you collect, you can either put it in a litter bin that's available, or you can leave it by the litter picking station and the green spaces team will collect it in the morning. Um, so this was installed, I think, a week or two ago in Bolton Park. It's by the Warden Bridge, which is sort of next to the multi-use games area in Bolton Park. Um, we're hoping that if it proves popular, that it may be something that we can roll out in other sites across the town. Um, but it's quite new. It's not really something that we've seen other town councils, um, roll out. Obviously, the, the benchmark there is that the beach cleans in coastal towns, but we're hoping, hoping it will prove quite popular.
Thank you for your report, Nina. Um, any questions, uh, Council Stutchbury? And that was a thumbs up, was it, Council Harvey?
Yeah, I just to, um, both thank Nina and councillor Newell, uh, who, uh, retired councillor Newell for their work on this. I, I just see a lovely photograph on social media of councillor Harrington, Harrington Sue out there, um, um, picking up with one of these sticks and, and she looked very effective carrying it. And, uh, and, um, maybe she's showing us, um, where we go through the park. Perhaps we could all pick one up and follow her fine example in picking litter up. She looked like she was fully enjoying it, Chairman. So, um, I think this is a wonderful initiative. I think it's, uh, great that the office used Covid to do things like this. And if it is successful, maybe other authorities, um, other villages, other people will take it on, because it's obviously the way to go. Self-help groups, um, is a rewarding thing to do. You only got to see social media and see how many people, um, uh, out there picking litter up, um, and putting themselves on social media, doing it at any one kind, like at any one point, um, groups of people. So it's a good thing to do generally. So, well done.
Thank you very much for, uh, getting that sorted. Uh, I don't see any other hands, so we'll move on to item eighteen. Slight change of topic now onto hydroelectric power. And I remember this, this feels like deja vu. I remember when the university was talking about this back in the late two thousands, um, which I think was mentioned in the reports. Uh, so I'm back to you, Nina, is it?
That's right. Yes, so, um, so yes, yes, that's right, Warren. It was investigated by the university back in, I think it was two thousand and nine. As you say, it's written in the report. Um, so we were reviewing it because in December of last year, a member of the public attended the public session, um, uh, Mr Andy Savage, who's probably known to a lot of councillors. And he asked us to investigate the possibility of, um, renewable energy generation from the river. Um, so councillor Ruth Newell, um, put forward a motion, which was agreed. And it's in the report that the council investigates the potential of a feasibility study at appropriate sites in the town and reports back to committee. Um, so we contacted, um, various consultants that deal with these sorts of projects. Um, you'll see from the report, um, what we've looked at, what basically constitutes a good site for hydroelectric turbines. Really, the only two feasible sites in the town would be the Weir at Bolton Park, which is obviously on our land, and Tanlaw Mill at the university, which we know has already been investigated and they had quite an in-depth, um, pre-feasibility study conducted. Um, there are facts and figures there about how much a full feasibility report would cost us if we wanted to progress with, um, investigations on Bolton Park. But really, um, the, the utilisation of university's Tanlaw Mill would be a much more viable scheme to investigate for, for the various reasons detailed. So the recommendation really is to discuss via Pontio, which is the group between the university and the town council, as to whether the university are still interested, um, in investigating a hydroelectric scheme.
Thank you for that, um, update. Um, I was fortunate enough a couple of years ago to visit the Archimedes Screwers in Bedford, um, where they have, I think it's two, um, where of course, if you know Bedford, the river is on two levels. You've got the, the, um, very significant drop in river level between the high, high bit by the, I can't remember the name of the bridge in the town centre, but you've got the high bit which you can boat on and enjoy. And the, this one's quite enjoyable around there. And then of course you've got the low level, which the Archimedes Screw can, can generate electricity with the change in levels. But that was a very expensive project and it's still questionable how, how much energy it's, or how much money it's making. Because there's already in high water situations, it has to turn off because it can't cope with the flood situations. So it's a quite an interesting challenge, but great use of, uh, the water during most of the year. But of course, uh, we're somewhat shallower for the vast majority of the year in, in the upper catchment, uh, than we are, than Bedford is. Um, and you just have to look at the river now to see that it's not even twenty centimetres in, in the main. Or we don't have that big drop to create the, the, um, the energy. Um, just tricky on this, because it sounds like the right thing to do, but, uh, I do wonder if it's worth not, rather than waiting to Pontio, uh, that we actually just write a letter to the Vice Chancellor just to ask if this is on his radar, because he may not be aware of it yet, because of course he's a very new Vice Chancellor. Um, we're keen to support it, but, um, I'd be surprised if the university has a, you know, half a million quid or a million quid in his back pocket to suddenly do this. Um, but no harm in finding out if the university's got an interest at least. Um, Council Harvey.
Yeah, I'd go along with that, but perhaps maybe CC in the Pontio group, so they're aware of it, that, that they're aware it's happening, I would say. But yeah, go direct to the top and see whether it's feasible or not. It may be the university could maybe turn it into, I don't know, some sort of engineering project. They really do engineering at the university.
Exactly, no, no.
I know, it could be a psychology experiment in, I don't know, whether you could somehow manufacture it as some sort of research grant, I don't know. But I think, yes, I agree, uh, go straight to the Vice Chancellor, but like I say, let the Pontio group, uh, be aware of this, I think, is what I would say. I agree.
Sounds good. Uh, Council Stutchbury.
I did notice the other day the university were doing something about technology and robots and, um, and all sorts of things like that. So they're expanding their remit over the time. Um, if nothing more, it might be something that the students want to do a feasibility study on and, and look at it as a project. Even if they haven't got the money, the university generally sees to fund most of their external extensions through donation. And maybe somebody will come along at some point and donate the half a million pounds to, um, to, um, do the project. If the university hasn't got it, um, many of their things are done. They're very good at getting funding into the university. Um, this is a opportunity to do something environmental and I would imagine the Vice Chancellor might be interested in. He, he may not see it as an immediate priority, but he may take it forward in future years. So, um, and it would be a good use of that water, re-harvesting the, the mill race. And it's got to be the right thing to do one day if it isn't done immediately.
Thank you. Council Stutchbury, uh, Councilor Donahue.
Thank you. Um, when I was mayor, I had a look around Stowe School. They had an open, um, an open day and it was really interesting. And, um, a lot of their students, they have like an engineering, um, I don't know what department you'd call it. Um, but they, they do some good work up there. And I'm wondering whether we get, you know, let them know that this is on the horizon. Um, and also Silverstone, they've got a college, Stowe Engineering. So anything that we could let them know that is possible.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts? Council Schaefer.
These all sound like very good ideas. I would just raise a slight note of caution there that the university, I'm pretty certain does not have half a million to a million pounds in its back pocket, because no university does these days. And this seems like a project that would be somewhat beyond the remit of high, uh, high school students. So I think it's a great idea, but maybe we shouldn't be overly optimistic about what can be done, you know, on a shoestring here. And then of course, all the issues with the report come, or that have been raised in this report come up again, that the, um, financial viability of these projects at the moment seems doubtful. Having said that, technology in these areas does develop. So, uh, I hear what Council Stutchbury is saying, that what isn't feasible now may well be feasible in five years' time. So it's worthwhile keeping it on our radar as well as the radar of the university.
Thank you. Uh, that's some good advice to consider. Uh, Council Davies, did I see your hand up earlier? Okay, thanks. Um, I'm minded to, to suggest we do write to the Vice Chancellor just to remind him of the old project and that the town council was, um, keen to remind him of that. And if there was any interest in it, um, I did mention it to him actually a few months ago when I bumped into him. Um, so you never know, um, but I think we need to be, uh, need to consider the scope of our committee. And if this is another project, now actually we don't have the bandwidth to deal with, if it's something the university doesn't want to run with, um, you know, with the figures in the paper, I think we'd have, we'd have better success if we just invented a couple of tens of thousands as the solar panels in a community solar panel project somewhere and reap the rewards that way, rather than trying to tap into twenty centimetres of water, um, for most of the year. But that's my personal, my personal view. But I think it'd be no harm, um, as John clarified, that we write to the Vice Chancellor and CC Pontio. So is that a good action for now? Oh, sorry, Council Willis, was that just a query on that bit?
Uh, no, I was just saying in much agreement, to be honest, there's no harm in asking. Um, that's, that's my, always been the golden rule that I've lived by. Um, you know, if you don't ask, you don't get. For all we know, we might get, but.
What was worth asking? Okay, so sorry, um, do you want to put your hands up if you're happy with that, uh, that, uh, director travel? Excellent. Uh, okay, thank you very much. Those against? Upstanding. Okay. You okay, Paul?
Yep, yep, fine. That was agreement.
Right, um, but I think given the number of things in our agenda, we'll, we'll wait until we have a response before we discuss this any further. Uh, right. Right, community right to buy, item nineteen. So I think this should be a fairly straightforward one, hopefully. Um, do we agree that we support this right to buy?
Agree.
Agree? So those are, those are agree?
Yep, that's almost everyone. That's unanimous.
Can I just ask, is it community right to bid or right to buy? Because it's in.
Right, right to bid is actually the, the formal technical term.
Yes, it's the, somehow that slipped in. Thank you, Margaret. It's, it's the right to bid, not the right to buy. That's something.
Because you don't have a right to buy. It has to be offered to you first and then you can bid for it. Um, but yeah, okay, excellent. Um, uh, moving back. Next time I'll be prepared. I have my agenda on another screen, so I'll be a little bit slicker. So item twenty then, green spaces compliments and complaints log. Uh, so you've got that on appendix H. Um, Lee, is this for you or Nina?
It's, it's really to, to note the report. So as it says, you will receive this every six months. So these really are just any complaints or compliments as we've received in the office and actioned and responded to over the last six months.
Good.
Thank you. Were there responses to those? Yeah. Thank you for that summary. And my trackpad has just died, so excuse me while I use my other device. Okay, item twenty-one, access awareness. Um, to review any access issues relevant to the working groups remit. Um, I'll need a bit of background to what the working group is on this one and perhaps new members will as well.
We are.
We are the working group. We're not a committee, Warren, we're the working group.
Thanks, I was assuming there was an access working group as supplementary, so this is actually part of our main.
It's just a standing item for any access issues to be raised.
Okay, thank you. I was thinking there was another access awareness group because I know there is also a civic one out in the community already. Excellent, so I was a bit worried we were duplicating that. So are there any issues we need to draw to the centre of the committee?
Just one, chairman, we were always very fortunate that councillor Strain Clark was a member of the access awareness group. So quite often things used to come by osmosis to us anyway. So it might be worth you consult with the chairman how we make sure we don't miss any issues coming from access awareness. Perhaps you as chairman and the town clerk can make sure that if there is any issue, they get picked up at the meeting. Because they used to come straight in fresh with councillor Strain Clark and we won't have that now. So we don't want to, after putting so much effort into access awareness, to let it slip really. It's on every committee to make sure that we do consider it. But it might be something that you could, as chairman, talk to the town clerk how we do that and bring it back at another meeting.
Well, we do have our rep on the access for all group, so if there's any issues that are raised from that, I would be reported back via our rep. And Nina, was that what you were going to mention?
Yes, yes I was. So our two reps on access for all are Geraldine Collins, who is not a member of environment committee, working group, sorry. And Ryan Willard, who is?
Okay, so if anything comes via Ryan, do let me and the town clerk know so we can get the relevant item on the agenda if necessary.
Of course, I'll hold that ASAP.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any other non-access for all issues that need to be brought to our attention? I'm not seeing any hands, so, okay. That leaves us to item twenty-two then, which is the Buckingham Community Wildlife Project, to receive any updates from representatives. And Nina, who are our representatives again on this one?
Sue, I'm pretty sure is one of them.
And Fran Davies and Margaret Gately.
Oh, you found it quicker than me.
Excellent teamwork.
And Lee liaises with that group as well.
Okay, so presumably most items are coming through as an agenda item, but Margaret, sorry councillor Gately, did you want to comment and then councillor Stutchbury?
It's just that, thank you, Ruth Newell sent some information yesterday or the day before. Minutes from the previous meeting and also an agenda with a scheduled date in July, I think it is. So there is a meeting scheduled fairly soon. Obviously, there'll be a report back from that meeting to the next relevant environment committee.
That meeting is just before the next environment meeting, actually, on the twenty-sixth.
Of course, if it immediately precedes it.
Anything that needs to be updated to this working group will be.
Thank you. Then councillor Stutchbury?
Certainly just to say that in my private correspondence with Ruth, she did indicate her willingness to carry on working on that. And looking to have a positive engagement with the committee on it. So some of what she's been doing for three dates, most of us, I think. So I hope that we'll build a, and carry on with that good relationship where she used to as chairman and sort of double hat. And I know councillor Margaret Gately is a good friend to Ruth and maybe we can carry on that good relationship. And maybe the meetings are prior to this, they usually be prior to this meeting because it was when we were meeting in the town council. It just worked out that Ruth could chair one meeting before she chaired the next one. Maybe if we talked to them about, it might be with different chairman of it. Maybe if the meetings were dated, we could have enough time to have the report here to discuss in the meetings. Quite often, we were relying on Ruth to update us, chairman. So it might be just a matter of changing some dates a little bit to make sure that we don't miss anything.
Okay, well, I don't want to tell a third-party organisation how to run their meetings, but our reps could obviously bring that. Report back to the organisation of what may or may not work best for them. So I'll leave that in the representative's hands if that's okay. Right, so we look forward to hearing all the great news over the coming months for that group. So news releases, I'm just quickly looking through the agenda. We're probably not quite far enough on in terms of lighting yet to do anything on news on that. Maybe we've got a bit more meat on that, we could come back to that. I do wonder, do we want to make an announcement that we've reviewed the draft flood plan and the draft flood plan is currently draft? But recommend people take a chance to read it. Would that be a good thing to do as an interim measure? Yeah, councillor Stutchbury?
Yeah, I was just going to say it's a good thing to show people we're not neglecting it.
Can I leave that with the officers to draft a little something?
Yep.
Excellent, thank you.
So just to, sorry, Warren, just to clarify, what we do with press releases, we'll draft it, but then we'll send it to you for a chair's quote.
Okay. Very good. And I don't think we've moved anything else on enough sufficiently to do a specific news release, so we're happy just with that one? Yeah, okay. As I wasn't planning to speak, agenda item twenty-four, I don't have any announcements, so we can move swiftly over that. And I'll think about how I can entertain you at the next meeting. So twenty-fifth item agenda is the next meeting of the twenty-sixth of July. And who knows what format that will be, but given today's announcement, I'm sure the town clerk will keep appraised of the situation in due course. But twenty-sixth of July is our next meeting, so that brings us to an end of this meeting. We need, I see we've got a confidential item.